I'd like to go have a meeting of the August 15th, Springfield School Board. To order please. The first thing we're going to have is roll call, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Petrie.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mrs. Frola.
Here.
The allegiance to the ally of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You good?
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right. We'll start with presentations. You want to introduce?
Sure, so we have a couple of presentations tonight. So the first presentation's gonna be from Mr. Basco. This summer, he took a group of kids to Europe and they did a World War II student trip. So unfortunately, some of the kids couldn't be here today, so Mr. Basco's gonna share some, um, some pictures.
All right, thank you. The students that we wanted to, that we took to Europe, you know, the social studies teachers, we all understand the importance of this information, but we also want the kids to learn from it like in a very visceral way, a very, uh, a way that they'll remember forever. So I went on this World War II trip, I kinda created it, and we did all these wonderful experiences through the city, and as we went on, the kids learned more and more. If you hold it right there just for a second, this Imperial Warhammer Museum in London is one of the most important museums in the world, and it was fascinating to the kids because they've never seen stuff like this in person. Go ahead, please. The kids couldn't be here today, um, most of them are working, but I have many comments that they wanted to share. Uh, what, there's a piece of the Red Baron, and this is a, a piece that was flying on the Chancellor Building when the Soviets took Berlin in 1945. What we wanted to do was create places where the kids could go and see these things and get a better understanding of the, the real impact. Uh, we went on the Underground here, this is in London, and everything so far, the kids were absolutely amazing on this entire trip. Uh, can you hold it right there for a second? I don't know, I'm not really a fan of the Royals, but some people are. There are two flags that fly over Buckingham Palace. Uh, the Union Jack, which is the one that everybody recognizes, and then this one, you can't quite see it, but it's got four squares, and that means King Charles, or the Queen, whoever it is at the time, it was just, just became King Charles, he was now in residence. So, um, go ahead, please. So the kids are learning, and this was fun, you can see the kids on the bus, here they are eating dinner, and then early on, this is what they did most, when we were stopping because, um, of all the, uh, the length, the trip was very, very hard. Uh, hold it right here for a second, everybody thought that was, uh, this right here is where I want you to hold it. No, go back, go forward one more. Uh, and this one, here's the Tower of London. I didn't know if you guys knew this, but Ohio is TikTok famous around the world. Uh, we were running into classes and that, my group of students there, the Springfield kids were very lively. They were the ones that introduced themselves to every group of kids that went by. Well, we had a small group of kids and they were from Germany, and, and they asked us where we were from, and I said, "Ohio," and every single elementary kid started laughing. And I also started saying, "Ohio, Ohio," and apparently Ohio is TikTok famous for absolutely nothing happening there. So, so the kids were like, "Well, here we are," and, uh, we enjoyed it. Uh, go ahead, please. Uh, the car is for Adrian, uh, he loved the cars that they had there. We rode on the Underground, um, so we had a really nice start, and now we're gonna slow down a little bit as we get into Normandy, which was the, one of the highlights of, of the trip. So we enter through Wisterham, which is in Normandy, France, um, and then we went to the beaches themselves. And this was a really interesting moment for me and the kids, uh, because as you see these next couple pictures, you've seen them before on videos, uh, but when the kids were walking through and they saw these impact craters from when the Second Ranger Battalion landed, Mohammed was hiding, I told him to get, poke his head up, but, uh, the kids were absolutely amazed, like to actually be there where the American soldiers were, uh, was an unbelievable experience for them. Now here, hold this one here, you guys have seen this picture before in the images, but the one on the right, they, what they do every early June, and my kids love this, as they're wandering around, they, we ask them, "What's this for?" Every June, they walk around with sand from the beach, and they rub it into the name so that it pops out like that. And anytime a visitor comes to another family's grave sites, they do that. So our kids, again, were fascinated by this, it's a really overwhelming experience. Thank you, go ahead. That's just, uh, more pictures of the, this is at Omaha Beach. Now, this was a really interesting educational piece, this is the German cemetery, which many of you may not have known existed. Uh, go to the next slide. You'll see it's definitely different, isn't it? It's very kinda plain and kinda roughed out, and one of the interesting things I'm gonna point out to my students this year, and I, I know Mr. Graves is here, he does do the same thing. Those grave sites, almost every one of them said 1925, 1926, 1927. The Germans were 17, 18, 19 years old, they were, they were very, very young. This gives you an idea of what the American soldiers faced as they were coming up. It's a long beach, and of course, we have sand from, from our trip that everybody, somebody's got taken in customs because it looked like those, you know, might've been drugs or something. It was just sand, it was just sand. Um, more, uh, more of the museums that we went to go see, oh no, by the way, when you're in Europe, there are places like Rouen, which is where, you know, the Joan of Arc was burned at the stake 500, 600 years ago. It's, it's, you're surrounded by history, so. We went to the Palace of Versailles, so this is non-stop, I'm making the kids do all these different things, uh, to truly, really try to get a great experience, uh, on this trip. Beautiful ornate places, the, the kids were wild, but it was packed. Uh, we were told it wasn't that busy, but it really was. Now we finally made it to Paris, uh, the Eiffel Tower was, 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 we, we really enjoyed that night cruise there, it was really wonderful, and this was the highlight for me. Um, if you guys have been a, a fan of Band of Brothers, or if you've ever watched it, this was, this was for me, I said, "We're going here." Um, so the kids are like, "Okay, we're gonna learn a little bit more." Uh, I need you to pause it here for a minute. Uh, this man's name is Henry Mignon, he was nine years old during the Battle of the Bulge. Uh, he went to school one day, and this was after the Americans had liberated, uh, his, his particular village was just north of Bastogne. He and his three brothers and sister, and his father and mother lived, you know, on a farm, um, about, about 10 minutes north of Bastogne. So, you know, everybody's excited, the Allies have liberated the place, and then all of a sudden, the Germans start coming back. He goes to school, and wouldn't we all love to hear this for different reasons, he said, "We're all going home now." This was early in the morning, the teacher said, "Go home and stay in your homes." And so he did at nine years old. At nine years old, and then all of a sudden, the, they could hear just this, this horrendous crashing sound as the Germans were advancing. Um, they, they come in, they, they, they take over the place, and then they leave, and when they left, they took all the water out of the, out of the well. And I tell you that because Henry and his family were inside the house, his dad went outside to go get some snow to make a beverage. When, uh, when the Germans started shouting again to retake Bastogne, or try to, they took his village. As they were moving into Bastogne, his pater was hit with a shell and just got shrapnelled in the chest. And it's so, was so rewarding for me to have my students listen to this guy speak, because they were riveted by what he was telling them. And his dad was hit with, with shrapnel in the chest, walked a few yards home, kissed all of his children on the head, and then fell over dead. And it was, this was at nine years old, the, the trauma that children have faced around the world, and this is what I wanted our kids to see. Like, we don't, we don't have experience that, like, of this magnitude, but we all, in Springfield, Lakeport, in all of our homes, we've had trauma, and I, I just, it was so impactful to have this gentleman speak to us. What happened, an SS officer came in, and he was looking for Germans. And I'm like, "What are you looking for, Germans?" Well, well, the SS were involved with the massacre a month ago in France, and from the Second SS Battalion, Panzer Battalion, and so they were terrified. The regular Germans told Henry and his family, "Watch out for the SS." Now, the regular German, the Warlock soldiers were fine, they, you know, they were trying to win them over, but the SS were different. Uh, he went, eventually, they were off school for a whole year, um, and they went back to , uh, school, two of his friends were killed by unexploded organs, pardon me, but when the Americans came back and liberated the place, the, the Americans kept wanting to give them their chocolate, and it was really hard to eat, but the, the kids loved it, and they kept asking Henry, so, "Hey, where's all the schnapps? Where's all the schnapps?" So that's what the American soldiers were, were looking for, and he, he fell in love with, uh, America and Americans, and to this day, when you go to Bastogne, these people that are in that, they, they, they were so welcoming to our kids and to me, they were just like, "Thank you guys for, for being who you are as Americans and for coming over here." Uh, it was just an amazing, amazing story. He's still, he obviously, he's still with us, he was real good friends with Don Malarkey, uh, from Band of Brothers, uh, who passed away, I think it was in 2017, the last member of Easy Company passed away just last year. Um, go ahead, please, thank you for letting me speak about him, because he was such a moving person. In Band of Brothers, there's a woman who's a nurse who was killed on Christmas Eve, she was a real person, uh, that's where she was buried. This is in the, uh, the woods just outside of Foy, he was telling the story of the 101st Airborne, and now we're looking out at the battlefield there. Amazing trip. And the kids all this while are learning more and getting more, and now they're at the cemetery, another cemetery, really, really big cemetery, the Henry Chappelle Cemetery, beautiful place, more for the kids to see just the sacrifice, and you'll see in the next picture, look at this. I mean, these are Americans, and it was, it was really overwhelming for the kids. Uh, to see it on video is one thing, to, to be there was amazing. This handsome young guy is me, the other one is, I always imagined that would go over better than it did. This guy, well, can you go back to that real quick? I want my, uh, my fellow teachers to see, uh, that, that's David Prock, he was a, um, an exchange student who traveled across Germany to get to meet, to meet us there in Cologne, uh, just to say hi, and he wanted to send a message back home to Springfield, how much he loved his teachers and how much he loved his experience at Springfield. So that was a really wonderful thing. Uh, that's the Cologne Cathedral, go ahead to the, go ahead, go on to the next slide, I know I'm probably going too long, I apologize. That's the cathedral in World War II, the, the Allied bombers used that as a target to move on to their, uh, other locations. Um, that's, I, I just took a picture of the train because it ended up going like 280 kilometers per hour, high-speed rail's a good idea, I wish America would adopt, you get there in no time. Um, that's the Reichstag Building, uh, in 1945, and there it is today. The Berlin Wall, our artists in our school, I would love to have seen this, absolutely amazing, the kids were blown away by the wall. Just more pictures of it, they have future generations plan to, to paint more things on that wall there. For the Brandenburg Gate, and our Springfield students, Joey has the same look on his face the whole time, "I wish you could be here, I'm so sorry there because I'm not here." Checkpoint Charlie, uh, we have a checkpoint Charlie in Springfield High School, it's right outside Mr. Graves and Mr. Benson's room. Uh, kids going one way are entering Russia or East Germany, and if they're going the other way, they're going the West Germany outlet, you guys figure out who's who. Uh, that's, uh, checkpoint Charlie today and 1961. Really amazing, the kids were blown away because they didn't really, uh, you know, Cold War isn't gonna get a lot of publicity, except in our classrooms. The, in Berlin, this is now where it gets a little bit more somber, we're entering the Jewish quarter, and the buildings have been untouched, as a reminder of how terrible the war was. This, if you could pause it here for just a second, the Memorial of the Murdered Jews of Europe, this is the actual name of, uh, and when that was first created in 2005, the people of Berlin hated it. They're like, "What kind of memorial is this?" If you ever get to Berlin, and there's videos on YouTube which you can take a look at it, this is when you start on the left, it, it kind of, it's hard to understand what's going on, but as you go in, they close in on you, and all the sunlight is disappearing, and you start to get that awkward sense of something really bad, it's, it's very troubling. And so what ended up being, at first, they weren't so sure about it, now it's a really amazing memorial. Uh, and our kids were just blown away by seeing it and, and, and just being out in the open with it, it was really something special for the kids. Go ahead. Uh, this is, uh, as you can read down there, the Jewish cemetery and former site of the SS Center where 50,000 Jews were sent to Nazi concentration camps. On the, like, stop here, this is an important piece right here, this one. Um, I was walking through Berlin with my kids, and one of my kids kicked something, and he, "Mr. Basco, what's this?" I didn't know. When you, when you pass a house or a building in Berlin, and they're spreading it around to other German cities, uh, they have these markers, and they're raised a little bit so that you'll trip on them just a little bit, so you'll look down and notice. These were the Jews who lived in these buildings prior to being deported and murdered, and as you can see, murdered in Auschwitz, murdered in Auschwitz, murdered in Auschwitz, deported, uh, fled from Prague, fled from Austria, and then eventually sent on, and this was such a powerful reminder for our kids, because that's not something that they're used to seeing, like, why would you wanna keep bringing that up? But it's that pain and that suffering that the kids understand to, to learn to make a, a better world, and these were all over the place, and so I had to take these pictures, um, just that I, that I would remember and that I could share with people. And then finally, in Dachau, and, and to describe this place, it's indescribable, you can read there, there's quarter of a million victims came through there, 45,000 people died there, that's the train station where they were often unloaded, it was just a horrible experience. Many of you have heard of many of the camps, you may not have realized the camps were this extensive. Um, Arbachmuckfry, you've all heard of that, it's, you know, work will make you free, that's what they put on those, those doors. Uh, this is Dachau itself, those, those rocks are where the buildings for the prisoners used to be. Just a very, uh, just a very terrible location, very, it's just a really, you can feel it It's indescribable. Uh, one thing real quick, on, that building right there is a, is actually a Protestant chapel, and they also have a Catholic church on the grounds there. What people don't realize is Dachau was the very first concentration camp, and it became the location where all the pastors, ministers, and priests that the Nazis were trying to silence during their rise to power were sent here to Dachau, so it became kind of a place for all three faiths, you know, well, you know, two faiths, the Christian faith and Jewish faith, but Protestants and Catholics, they all come together to kind of honor those that were killed here. Uh, and Dachau was kind of their training camp for all the other camps, so it's a really particularly bad place. And that just kind of gives you a sense of some of the, of the scale there. That, of course, is a gas chamber, um, which you can see the height, it, it's just, it's really even hard to even look at it now, and of course, now, but Dachau, uh, gas chamber wasn't used, uh, but the crematoriums were used, that crematorium there. And I think the last picture is, um, our last night in Europe, Joey, who was always on video, uh, ended up going upstairs. So what comes of this now, after our trip, is a, a couple things come to mind. I, I worked with Officer Ron Gilbert all the time on honoring our veterans, and, and if you're a veteran here today, uh, or, and, and many of you are veterans, and, and many of you know veterans, I thank you so much, and this is coming from the kids, from the people we met, thank you for your service. Uh, it's an absolute honor to work with, with people and be around people that have served their country like this. Uh, Officer Gilbert did, and, and still serves him, with me and him working together, we're trying to do a couple things, we're taking this and, and we're gonna build on it. We're gonna go back in a couple years, but we wanna tie it in with Springfield's community. We wanna find members of the community, uh, members of the staff, members of the families that have relatives that served over there, and whether or not they can go themselves, we're gonna go back and we're gonna lay a wreath, or we're gonna lay flowers, or have a poem read. Um, we're gonna do those things to, to kind of connect the school with history, because that's what we do in our social studies department all the time, is we try to make it live, we try to make it very, very, very real. And for these kids, like, they, they to this day are blown away, they, they just stop what they're doing when you ask them about it, so we're absolutely blown away about this trip. The second thing, uh, we're gonna do, which I'm gonna require some help on, is all these ideas, and the kids and I talked about it on the way back, is to create our own gardens here at Springfield High School, the 7 through 12 building. Uh, the first one we'd like to do is a Veterans Victory Garden, where we have all of our veterans who are Springfield graduates have a brick or a stone or something put in a garden somewhere to kind of honor those people that have served. We also, you know, wanted to do one, and this comes from the kids as well, for teachers that have, that have, uh, served, and teachers that have been, uh, a part of their lives, they, they were very complimentary of their teachers. And we've had some great teachers, I, I saw a picture a couple months ago of several of our, of our teachers here that visited a friend of mine, Greg McBride's, his grave. Uh, I was one of his pallbearers, and we should remember these people, Kenny Gawn, you know, people that have worked here. So these ideas, we wanna create gardens, a, a victory garden, something that lasts, something that people can say they were here at Springfield High School and they made a difference, because everybody here does. We just need to, like, remind people, like, sometimes it's uncomfortable, but you have to do it. Uh, that's one of the things our kids learned, they loved, even the suffering that they saw, they loved hearing about it, because it makes it real. And so here we wanna do, we wanna create some gardens, we know, I've already talked to some people, Canton Road Gardens, Garden Center, and that football practice field I had built with Clayton Wilson and the help of other people, uh, we can do this to make a garden, I'm thinking in those islands in the front of, of the high school where the cars come through, something really nice, I wanna honor the students that have come through, graduating students, something that we can build on and look at. Uh, and again, we're gonna go back, uh, we're gonna go back in a couple years, I'm gonna have my kids going through one of these concentration camps, and it's tough, and it's, and I want it to be, um, and I want them to learn from it, and then bring it home and share it with others. Uh, and I wanna thank, um, all my social studies friends that have, that have always supported me on this and my administration for letting me go. I went in October to some of these sites, I appreciate that very much. Um, and, um, I thank you again, and hopefully you guys will join me on the next trip. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks, Dave. All right, so next, um, Mrs. Twab and the cheerleaders.
I only have three of them tonight, because we also volunteer with the youth program, so they are, the rest of them are at practice coaching, so. Okay, right around here, okay, cool. All right. All right, so good evening, everyone. Um, tonight, we're here to talk about bringing stunting back to our cheer program here at SHS. It has been many, many years, 20-plus years, since we were able to use these kind of skills on our sidelines, and while I'm not exactly sure, um, why most schools in our previous, it's kind of like a league thing, that they kind of stopped doing it, uh, whether it was for safety or insurance or et cetera. However, I do know the world of cheerleading, even from when I was cheering, I'm gonna be coming up for my 20th year reunion here pretty soon, um, so it's been a while, but especially in regards to like stunting and stunting safety, uh, it's vastly different in just the last five or 10 years, it's changed. For, through USA Cheer, and then NFSH is where we get a lot of our certifications from, so they're constantly updating every year, we have to get a new rulebook because there's addendums or things changing to make the, the sport safer. Um, so last spring, the cheer coaches in the MAC League, so all eight of us, came together and we gave a presentation to the athletic directors at a meeting, and our league commissioner, um, on basically what stunting was, why it's beneficial for our athletes, and then what it would bring to our schools in general. So the presentation went very well, it was very well received by all of the A.D.s, um, they were very interested in implementing this at their programs, um, however, they decided to, that it would be good to go, but they kicked it back to each individual school to get approved by their school board because it, of insurance purposes. So that being the main reason, um, why it would be, we're coming here to you two guys tonight. So right now, five of the eight schools in our MAC League are approved in stunting, and we're hoping to be the sixth, um, to kind of get things rolling. Uh, these, these girls had a unique opportunity, I'm kinda skipping ahead here, but they had a unique opportunity, and we go to UCA Camp every summer, which is the Universal Cheerleaders Association, and they put on a four-day camp for us, we've been going to those camps for years, and I was talking with our state rep director last year when we were at Bowling Green, and we were the only school at the camp that didn't stunt, everyone else stunts. Um, and as she said, you guys are in, under our insurance umbrella, you are able to learn stunting act while at camp, even if you're not a school that's approved. So we had the opportunity to do some of those basic beginner, um, stunts with a thigh stand, shoulder sits, and going into that prep level, which I'm not gonna have them demo today, only because, because of the floor. So we've been doing a lot of safety training, and this floor is not safe for us to be demoing those types of stunts. So we have certain surfaces that we are allowed to stunt and not allowed to stunt on. Um, but the girls have gotten some learning basics under their belt as far as what they have been learning. So, kind of to explain, uh, stunt, it's very, a lot of times it's misinterpreted, it's misunderstood, or just not knowing a lot of information. The NCAA has, um, I think it's 2018, they implemented the sport of stunt, which is a little bit different than what we would be doing as a school cheer during football and basketball season, stunting. So stunt is a spring sport, and there are some states in the US that have it at the high school level, but a lot of it is at the college level, and our GMAC conference around this area, which would include Walsh and Malone, and a couple other schools in Ohio, they all, Ashland, they're all going to be having a stunt program, so, which is great opportunity for our girls, that if they're looking to go to those schools, they have something to offer them, whether it's the sideline cheer program or the stunt program that's in the spring. Um, the spring stunt program is actually played like a match, so the two schools go head-to-head, and they have the same routines that they're performing, and they get points, whoever performed that, there's four quarters, and whoever performed that quarter better gets those points. At the end of the match, who has the most points is the team that wins. Um, Ashland University just won the GMAC, and they have competed nationally, uh, the last two years in that, so they have a really, a great growing program there for stunt, as well as our, our sideline cheerleading, which they do a lot of the basic stunts, which is what we are kind of asking to have approved for. But these girls, they're, it's equipping them with the knowledge they'll need to then go to college, because us not being a stunting or building school is really kind of putting them at a disadvantage, unless I have a team of standing fools, which not a lot of teams in this area have, um, they're really at a, at a disadvantage of trying to get on like a D1 team, so I know a lot of our students go to Akron and Kent because they're close by, um, those are D1 schools, and they're very hard to make their cheer team, you have to have very elite skills to be on that team. So, stunting is a very, can be a very dangerous part of cheer, so that I don't wanna sugarcoat it, it can be dangerous, um, if it's not done properly. And so it's very necessary to be prepared that, um, each person learns the correct positioning, their, their hand grips and all of that, of what they need to do to be safe and, and do it safely. Uh, as a coach, I've been certified by USA Cheer for stunting the last few years, and we have to retake our certification every year to make sure everything's up to date, like I said, with the safety changes that happen, um, from year to year. And then we also have the USA Cheer and NFAS Spirit Rulebook that they hand out every year to coaches. So this spring and summer, I personally was able to, um, take the time and attend several coaching clinics over the state of Ohio, um, just to learn the basics myself. I did it very young when I was in youth, um, cheerleading, but I haven't done it again since then. So I, myself, then getting comfortable spotting and doing techniques and learning how to teach these skills, and also I partnered with Walsh University's head stunt coach, Trisha Hart is her name, she happens to also be our state cheer director, which is awesome to have her, um, as a resource here, and she lives locally actually in Springfield, Michigan. So, um, we love that, that we are able to use her a lot for things, and I'm always texting her and, um, meeting up with her just to make sure, kind of, see what I, what I need to do, what I need to learn, because that's only more information than I can give these girls to support them. So a few of our cheerleaders were actually also able to attend the Walsh stunt workout and practices to get familiar with some of these skills, Lily was one of them, um, that we went and worked out with their Walsh stunt team, and they were able to go up and be a flyer in a pyramid, or be a, a back spot, or a base, um, different things like that, so they learned some different techniques and some different prep skills, uh, with, with the college team, so that was really awesome for the girls this spring to be able to do. Uh, safety, obviously, is my number one priority when it comes to anything that we do, whether it's tumbling, or jumping, or any skill that we do on the sideline, and that would then float exactly for stunting as well. So this is why I, myself, have been putting in the work the last year, trying, uh, to get all of my ducks in a row of me feeling prepared before I even come to you guys to ask, um, that you approve us for this. And it's much overdue request of implementing this to our program, like I said, because it, it really does help these girls get better skills if they choose to pursue it at a higher level. Also- And it's much overdue request of implementing this to our program, like I said, because it really does help these girls get better skills if they choose to pursue it at a higher level. Also, some other benefits with, that would bring to the school or to the girls as a team, more sportsmanship, spirit raising on the sidelines, really getting our students action and building them up, and getting them excited at the games. It's important learning opportunities, it teaches discipline, cheer requires time and preparation and focus, and this only feeds more into it. The hard work, the teamwork, the physical fitness and mental strength, we have been in the weight room this summer, just doing some weight strength training, working with our athletic trainer, and then also a trainer that I met through my coaching seminar that was on the USA Cheer team, she's been also been giving me some guidance as well. So just kind of basically building their confidence and their self-esteem to perform their skills. Another thing too, I brought on two new coaches this year that have the wealth of knowledge when it comes to stunting, as both, they came, they both came from All-Star Cheer, which I don't know if anyone's familiar with All-Star Cheer, you spend lots and lots of money, it's a great time, and you get lots of opportunities to do, but a lot of your college cheerleaders have some type of All-Star Cheer experience because of the schools in Ohio are not giving that opportunity to the kids to be able to learn those elite skills. So that's why I, for them and being able to, sorry, for them to be able to assist us in the process of teaching our kids these skills. And I'm very proud of the girls that I've coached that have went on to do, whether it's D1, D2, D3 cheerleading and/or dance. However, every single one of those girls had some other type of secondary program that they were a part of to get to that level. So, I, I feel that I helped them, but also they, they had help on the other side too. So, all of those girls had that outside technical training, but I want to be able to give all of my team members a chance to feel prepared and knowledge and the training from our program alone, that they can feel that they want to achieve that level if they aspire to do so. So they also too, something new with cheerleading, you used to not be able to get athletic scholarships. Usually, if you're going to college for cheer, you have to try to get those academic scholarships only. They are offering now through NCAA, through the stunt program, athletic scholarships too. So that is something new this year that they approved. So there's many more ways for the girls to do that. We do have a girl that graduated last year that's going to be part of the Walsh stunt team starting this fall, so, or this spring. So we're really excited for her. Um, let me make sure. Okay, so we talked about that. So basically, what, why it's important and what we would be doing as our program to implement and how we would be implementing it, we would be looking to just do the sideline only right now, we wouldn't be competing at that level just because it would be so new. I would definitely like to ease into it, to make sure we're well and prepared with the knowledge that we would need. NFHS does have a progression list that we start, so we start at a double-based thigh stand, which I can tell you is a very simple, basic skills that our youth cheerleading girls are already doing on their sidelines. So we started, did I not, at camp, I said start with that first, right? We had to master every skill before we moved on to the next list. So we did get to experience some shoulder sits at camp, and then we did go into some prep level and extensions where you're going to have the three girls underneath of the flyer, and she's excited up like this. I probably, myself, would not be doing that on the sideline this year with our team, we would stay at that prep level, just because then we can use signs and pom-poms and stuff like that to get the crowd more engaged and involved that way. But we do have a very extensive progression list that we do follow, and I would, of course, wanted to start out with all of the basics, competition down the road maybe in a couple of years or something like that, just betting on how we're doing. Like I said, we're not going to demo today, I apologize, but the floor would not be safe. So just to kind of get why, how this could happen, with what extra cost would it be? Because I know with our financial situation right now, money is a huge point. Mr. Vaughn, we have sat down and talked over the last year of what actually that would cost. So, the insurance that our program would need to have, because I, I learned, this is something new I learned, was that not every sport in our athletic department is under the same tier of insurance. So we are on that middle tier, whereas football and wrestling are on that high tier, which is called the catastrophic head injury insurance, which we would be then just at that same level with the football players or the wrestling. But I will say there are way less injuries in cheer than there are in football and wrestling, and that USA Cheer has the stats on their website to prove everything and many conversations that I've had, because we do try to, we have so many safety precautions that we take. But, that would be the insurance that we would need to bump it up a tier, and it costs about $10 to $15 a girl right now, and with our program, that would cost us about $200 or less, which the athletic department has agreed, right? Yeah. Did I say that? The athletic department has agreed to cover that cost for us. If they wouldn't, I would take it out of my own fundraising money for these girls to be able to have this opportunity. So it's not a huge expense that we would need to take on. But they just, they're really excited about it, and they loved doing it when we were able to have those opportunities to, to learn those skills, and I just hope that we can continue to keep moving the program forward. We went to states last year, we're looking forward to hopefully qualifying for states again this year, and just to keep growing the program upward. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. We will have that on the board agenda for next month.
Okay.
Okay. Oh yeah, we thought they were going to demonstrate, but then Bethany said, ah, no, the floor would be, yeah, we don't have the insurance yet for it, so we weren't going to take that chance.
It may have been a hard landing.
Yeah, it would have been a very hard landing, yes.
Now, for informal, I would just like to thank, my part is thank Mr. Bosco and the cheerleaders and for their presentations, and I don't know about you, but I'm looking forward to Mr. Bosco's next trip over there. I'm saying about going, that, that's an awesome experience for us. So thank, Mr. Ray?
I'd say my, Mr. Bosco did a great thing there.
Yeah.
And, and I think he's still doing some great things, so I look forward to seeing what's going on in the future.
Perfect. Mr. Hough?
Thank you, Cynthia. Interesting trip, Mr. Bosco. I had a, as I've said before, I had an uncle that spoke German in the church that he grew up with, and then served in the Armed Forces in the Transportation Division in one of the units that he served in. And they did overrun some of the concentration camps, and he ended up bringing Pichker's home. Unfortunately, his dad got ahold of him and burned him because it bothered him so much. He was mad at his father, and I never knew my grandfather, he died in 50, I was born in 59. But he said, "Dad, these are proof that this thing happened, these things, that these atrocities happened." So, live history. Thank you for taking that trip. On another note, not much happening at the State House, except we all know about property taxes, so in Senate, Senator Herschel Craig introduced property taxes on qualifying owner occupied homes and names, and this act is called the Property Tax Relieved and Local Government Support Act, that is in the State Senate. Look for that to make its rounds. Last month, I also talked about writing the letters, and I've started to write mine. Have you started to write yours? So State Senator Vernon Sykes, I'm writing to try to understand the outcome of the biannual budget. So I'm going to ask you folks, have you started your letters? Can't do this alone. We can't do this alone. This administration, this board, needs your help. Can't do it alone. Other than that, the school year is going to begin quickly, and summer went fast, and welcome back, all of you. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
Mr. Petrie?
I would just like to say that I'm very proud of the education that I got in Springfield Schools, and my graduating class in 1973 celebrated 50 years since graduation over this past weekend. So Springfield kind of runs true through me.
I'd like to thank Mr. Bosco. I've been to most of the places that he went when we were stationed in Germany. Many of you guys have driven to North Beach, Florida, near Germany, you can drive everywhere that he just put up there and see everything. As a veteran that served in the 101st, it's amazing. I take my kids out of school on Veterans Day, because sadly, we don't have anything that we do for our veterans, so I'm very big on getting that put into our school. Yeah, we've always taken our kids out to go see what's going on out there and to honor fellow veterans. So, I support that 100% to bring our community together even more, so, yeah. Seeing the cheerleaders, I know they left, but we've gone to quite a few competitions, and they are usually always, well, they are always out of the stunt, so that would be neat to be able to put them in, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, it's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18, 2023, and those are, have been included in the agenda exhibit.
Make a motion.
It's been moved in second, is the recommendation be voted on? Mr. Adams?
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, before we go to item seven, I need to kind of fall on the sword. I did not familiarize myself well enough with the board policy about what is actually, about holding to the citizens' comments on agenda items only. The last two meetings, we did not, I did not, we, we didn't do it that way. There are two opportunities for citizens to speak. The first one is on agenda items only, and that is, that is number seven. Then, the agenda items that are on other topics, excuse me, the comments or speaking on other topics will occur on item 25, so, but I take full responsibility for that. I usually, I usually read up and know what I'm doing, and obviously, I screwed up, but I wanted to give people that were here a chance, and I want to go back to following adopted board policy. All right, are there any citizens' comments on agenda items?
Hello, my name is Raylan Craig, and I live at 6460 Southview Drive, New Franklin, Ohio. As you can tell by my address, I am not a Springfield resident, but I have taught kindergarten, proudly representing this district, for 37 years. I consider this to be my second home, and I can no longer remain silent about the continuing issues facing all our district's teachers.
Mrs. Craig?
School board members.
If, if it is not germane to one of the items, then I'll ask you to wait to set item number 25.
It talks about negotiations.
Pardon?
It's on 26.
Executive session.
It's on negotiations.
I'm sorry?
He's saying that it's, because the executive session talks about negotiations, that it is on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't know that executive session was part of that, so.
I didn't know that, girl.
Okay, thank you. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Manter. So, go ahead.
Thank you. School board members have commented on the fact that the teachers only attend board meetings when negotiations occur. Our response to that is that we were hired to teach, not attend board meetings. Fortunately, most of the time, we do not have a need to attend board meetings. We are happy to focus on teaching and learning. Unfortunately, right now, we are here to make the point that we are looking for a fair contract and a fair wage. If you want teachers at meetings, we ask that you devote yourself to spending time in our schools. While I appreciate Mr. Hofer and Mrs. Monacino stopping by my door for a two- to three-minute conversation, I am asking board members to get a true picture. I want to extend an invitation to all of you to spend a morning or an afternoon in the classrooms to get a firsthand look at the challenges we face daily and the successes that we have despite these difficulties. I'd really like to see you visit on the 90-degree days when the temperatures are 90-plus degrees on the bottom floor and 10 to 12 degrees higher in the second-floor classrooms. Mr. Hofer, you have been very vocal in your unwillingness to adjust the school calendar, stating that children need instructional days above the state requirement so that they will perform better on standardized tests. It has been brought to my attention that some surrounding schools have higher test scores but attend fewer days than we do. Studies show that increased school days do not solely equate to higher test scores. Have you taken into consideration that your schools are not providing the interventions that were promised? Our struggling learners desperately need this help, and the literacy teachers are constantly being pulled to act as substitutes. In this scenario, it affects the learning of all children involved. Are you aware that the literacy specialists are trying to teach the daily lesson plan and service the needs of the lowest-achieving students simultaneously in the same classroom? When this happens, no student needs are being met. Mrs. Terry, you have repeatedly spoken about the need for the teachers to step up to help us pass this levy, and my response is, we are tired. Except for the most recent effort, I personally have helped with every levy campaign since I was hired in 1986. I have made telephone calls, written personal messages to parents, placed levy information on mailboxes, I have gone door-to-door with talking points, and even hosted coffee clutches with Mr. Archer in community members' homes. And trust me when I say this, I did not do this alone. My fellow teachers have stepped up time and time again. We are representing and advocating for our classrooms and our students 365 days a year. We are attending sporting events, community activities, making personal financial contributions to the levy campaigns, and even helping our needy students with levy, or with, I'm sorry, monetary donations. But again, we are tired, and we are unable to correct the constant missteps, poor decisions, and lack of strategic planning from this and previous school boards. We, like all of you, want this levy to pass, but regardless of the levy, your teachers deserve a fair contract and a fair wage. We are repeatedly told that we are in a people-centered organization, and perception is essential. The current perception from this staff is that we do not matter. We are continually asked to do with, do more with less, and we are constantly stepping up to do what is right for our students. Now is the time for you to invest in your staff. Spending precious district funds on extravagant renovations, upgrades, and new equipment is not necessary, and it's not what this district needs now. Respectfully, we ask that you get your own house in order before you try to fix ours. To be clear, we understand that these are challenging times and that financially, everyone is struggling. However, please do not confuse our understanding with complacency. We are ready to work together for a fair and equitable contract that is sustainable for both sides. Thank you so much for your attention.
Seeing none, and we will move to number eight, payments of bills. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of July pending audit.
Shall we move?
Second.
It's been moved in second that the board approved payment for the bills. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
I didn't hear him, sorry.
Motion passed. Number nine, payments of bills then and now. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payments of bills per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.41D.
Let me motion.
Do we have a motion?
I mean one.
I'll second.
Sorry. All right, it's been moved in second that the board approve a resolution of payments of bills per Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 10 is acceptance of financial reports. It's recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for July 2023, and these were exhibits four, five, and six attached to the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved in second that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for July 2023. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
I came here, so I have to move.
Oh, okay.
Everything's all right.
Did you want to say anything about what we just did? I'm moving on?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about it.
All right, number 11, personnel. It is recommended that the board accept or and approve the following personnel items. 11.1, a retirement resignation. They accept the retirement resignation of classified employee Laura Langsdale effective November 1, 2023. 11.2, resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Kristi Hock effective 2023-24 school year. 11.3, approve a reduction of the following classified position due to staffing need reasons effective for the 2023 school year, and that is one educational assistant at Shrop Intermediate. It's an office position of two hours. 11.4, employment. Employ Abigail Ray as a 100% intervention specialist teacher per the negotiated contract agreement pending proper licensure, and that's effective for the 2023-24 school year. 11.5, employ Julie Wellbart as a 100% family and consumer science teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective for the 2023-24 school year. 11.6, employ or reassign classified employee Tatiana Ramovich as a 6.5-hour educational assistant in the office at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, and that's effective 23-24 school year. 11.7, employment. Employ the Patricia, excuse me, Patricia Mayo as a classified substitute per the negotiated agreement pending a proper licensure effective the first day assigned. 11.8, athletic supplemental contracts. Approve the following supplemental contracts for the 23-24 school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure. Michelle Hannah, 712 Athletic Coordinator. Jody Burgess, 712 Athletic Coordinator.
Let me motion.
Second then.
It's been moved in second that the above personnel items just read be approved.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. Number 12, personnel two. Reassign classified employee Tammy Hofer as a six-hour transportation dispatcher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective 2023-24 school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the reassignment of Tammy Hofer as a six-hour transportation dispatcher.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
I'm staying.
Okay, it's been moved, or it's been approved that number 12.1 has been passed. Number 13, a service agreement. Village of Lakemore, with the Village of Lakemore Police Department. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with the Village of Lakemore Police Department to provide an attendance coordinator for the 23-24 school year. And again, this exhibit is attached to the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All right, it has been moved in second that the board approve a service agreement for an attendance officer for the Village of Lakemore, with the Village of Lakemore.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
All right, the motion is passed. Number 14, it is recommended that the board approve a resolution regarding complimentary passes and waiving payment of any entry fee to events for the 23-24 school year, and those details are in exhibit A.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that the board approve a resolution regarding complimentary passes and waiving payment for entry fee to the events. Are there, we have to vote on them first, right?
Well, no, this is just something that we do every year, and, you know, coaches, administrators, coaches, family members, board members, district employees, district residents, senior citizens. Our, our district, I mean, our conference, Kevin, we allow all senior citizens come in free, do we not?
Home and away.
For home and away, so all, all our conferences do that.
Correct.
Okay. And the fire police safety officials, if they're working the event, and booster members or volunteer parent can have one guest enter if they're working, or they sign in at the pass gate.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to approve resolutions regarding complimentary passes and waiving payments has passed. Number 15, OSBA delegate and alternate delegate. It is necessary to appoint a delegate and an alternate to the OSBA annual business meeting in November of 23. I'm asking other board members if anyone would like to be the delegate. Okay, Mr. Hofer? Alternate? Since I will be attending, oh, okay.
I looked at her, and she's like, what?
She gets a lot lately, don't she?
All right, Mr. Hofer and Mrs. Terry?
Hey.
All right.
Okay.
Do we have a, do we have to vote?
We gotta, who else first?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have to vote. Second?
We need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
It has passed, decided that Mr. Hofer will be our delegate, and Mrs. Terry will be the alternate. Number nine, payment of, excuse me.
Going backwards. No, please.
I can do this. Number 16, the 23-24 school bus routes. It is recommended that the board approve the bus routes for the 2023-24 school year and authorize the superintendent or designated to make changes as necessary during the 2023-24 school year to address enrollment changes and safety issues, and those are exhibits 9, 9A, and 9B attached.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the bus routes be adopted as shown in the exhibits.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to adopt bus routes as shown in the exhibit has passed. Number 17, a service agreement with the Ohio Alliance Billing LLC. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with the Ohio Alliance Billing LLC for the purpose of assisting and managing the district's Ohio Medicaid school program to procure federal Medicaid reimbursements for Medicaid-eligible services provided by the district, and that is exhibit 10 on your agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Ray, you'll second, okay.
It's been moved in second to accept the service agreement with the Ohio Alliance Billing LLC.
So what this is, is we charge for, for some of our services Medicaid, to get Medicaid reimbursement, I think what, speech and?
Speech, school psychologist, occupational therapy, and physical therapy.
And it's a very cumbersome billing process, so with Ohio Alliance, they will make sure that we get every federal money that we were supposed to get from it.
Any other, any questions? And Mr. Adams?
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Number, the motion is passed to accept the Ohio Billing Alliance Billing Program. Number 18, student handbooks. It is recommended that the board approve the student handbooks for Springfield High School, Junior High, for Shrop Intermediate, and for Spring Hill Elementary for the 23-24 school year, and all three of those handbooks are posted for, to the agenda.
So moved then. Second. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thanks to the principals and to anybody else who helped with it. One of the things that we are going to start working on for next year is making the handbooks align a little bit more from building to building, so it's easier to follow and where things are at. We started a little bit with between Shrop and Junior High, High School, using some of the same language, and so it's, there's a little bit more continuity.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed to accept the handbooks as posted. Number 19, it is recommended that the board approve the updated Athletic Code of Conduct effective for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the board approve the updated Athletic Code of Conduct as published with the, along with the agenda for the 23-24 school year.
And Kevin, tell me if I'm wrong, we haven't updated it in a while, so this was just cleaning it up a little bit, and, you know, one of the things that we wanted to do is, is have something where all the athletics are following, you know, somewhat of the same rules. They each have their own sport rules, but this is like the overarching Code of Conduct for it. So thanks, Kevin, for all your work on that.
Any questions before we go?
No.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has passed to accept the updated Athletic Code of Conduct for next year. Number 20 is policy review, and there is a lengthy list. I won't read all of them unless someone would like to hear all of them. Just reading titles. This is your first reading.
Yeah, so this is, so this is the first reading of it. It'll be approved in seconds right now?
Correct.
And then we will do the second reading next month.
Oh, wait a minute.
Do we have to motion and second this one?
No.
Oh, okay.
All right. Number 21, treasurer's report. Mr. Adams?
Dustin, you gonna put it up?
My payment, I, the famous, I was a kid, jobs, I don't know, I remember, I think it was us, or maybe the bigger boat, because I didn't, so, you can read, security force, this is, let me get the camera, you guys, you know, why don't you give a camera to one, let me know. We're gonna put it up on the board. This is this, if everybody knows, I don't know if everybody got it, I don't know if you knew about it, just wanted to have a board, tell you what's going on, what the process is, fairly rumors.
Okay.
We all got in the mail. I know I got one, and my son's got one, and nobody's really happy. It's not, and it's not news that we all love, but the deal with the Somme County values this year is unprecedented because of the changes made by the tax commissioner in Columbus, okay? The auditors throughout the state, all 81 of the county auditors, received a directive from the Ohio Tax Commissioner that you will raise your property values. We were fortunate that Kristen Scalisi negotiated down a little bit, down to 31.4% increase. That does not mean your taxes are gonna go up 31.4%. What it does mean is, as of right now, I wish I could tell you more, but when I get it, I will tell you, is the way the process plays out is, we will find out December of '23 to January of '24, the impact to the school district, and everybody throughout the state of Ohio. Because what will happen is the Columbus people that work under the Ohio Tax Commissioner will set our effective mileage rates, okay? That information will go up to the Somme County off, auditor's office, who will produce the document that I use to estimate our revenue in future years. Unfortunately, we're right in the beginning of the process. We're obviously gonna have people that are gonna contest their values, okay? My advice is, look at the value, ask yourself one question. If I had to sell the house today, could I get more than what the current value is stated? Most of the answer would be yes, even though it went up. It would be yes. I know of people that have challenged it, and the auditor came out, and they got, it went up even farther. So, I'm just saying, look at your data. It's out there in the Somme County. I don't know if you've all seen it, but you can go out, type your name in, pull up your, your information on your house, and look at the details. That's the important. Look at how many bedrooms they have on file, how many bathrooms. If you, if you have a deck, and you don't have a deck on it, that's, that's an issue you're gonna have to deal with. That's very common, especially if you've been in the house a long period of time, okay? But I think it's important to talk about this because there are just so many unknowns right now, and I wish there was more knowns than unknowns. But what I can tell you is, is there is gonna be an impact, okay? We just don't know what. When we get that information, I'll get up here and talk about it, and also talk about it in the finance committee. Other than that, thanks. Other than that, thanks.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for approving the bus routes this evening. This information will be distributed to parents starting tomorrow through email. We are working with a new system as we brought transportation in-house this year, required us to basically start over with routing. So, Mrs. Hamilton and the Transportation Department's been working through most of the summer, working with this new routing program, training and learning it and setting up the routes. So there, you know, will be some adjustments that we're, and growing pains that we're going through, but those routes will be emailed to all parents tomorrow. And excited to announce that as the school year gets started and a little closer to school, as we get all the bugs worked out, we'll be releasing a parent app that will be able to see their bus route information as well as receive updates. If, if a route's going to be running late that day, we can easily send that communication out through the app and also through email and, and such there. But that, that app will give push alerts, you know, like you receive news alerts on your phone. You'll receive those about buses being late, and hopefully reduce some concern with parents when buses are running late, and communicate that and be proactive about that communication and keep parents in the loop of what's going on. This past week, we also started some training with our staff on Stop the Bleed. We've installed Stop the Bleed kits throughout the buildings and athletic facilities, and these kits will be available in the event of a medical emergency that we can respond internally and help stop bleeding even before paramedics arrive. And the training's been offered. Lieutenant Bryce Hughes from Lake Moore Fire Department has graciously volunteered his time to come in and train our staff on, on what's provided in those kits. He is a certified Stop the Bleed instructor, so, and we'll be offering, continuing, to continue to offer training to staff as we start the school year, and make that available to more staff. Roosevelt, the abatement continues. We are now complete with the second and third floor abatement. They're moving on to the gym next week, so they're right on schedule, we're about fifty percent of the way through the abatement, which is scheduled to be completed about Septi, mid-September, and we'll move on to demo. Demo's already selectively started with some of the old playground equipment that was left over and things like that. Today, we learned a little bit of a, I find exciting news, that a resident contacted us that there is a time capsule buried, was buried in nineteen eighty-five near the flagpole at Roosevelt there. So we're going to look into that and try and find out some more information about that. It was not something we were aware of, so if anybody, community, staff, anybody knows anything about that, please get in touch with me so we can learn a little bit more about that. But we'll do what we can to find out. I think that would be a, a nice piece of, to see some history from that building as it's been demolished there, so. And then final piece update is something that came from House Bill thirty-three, the state budget bill there. For students who qualify under federal guidelines for reduced price meals, we will still continue to qualify students under the federal guidelines as either free or reduced, but the state budget bill has a provision in it that the state will cover the reduced price charges for those students that qualify there. So thirty cents for breakfast, forty cents for lunch that they have paid in the past, the state will now cover that. So students that are covered under either reduced or free meals will all receive free meals for this upcoming school year. So I'm excited to announce that. And there, nothing that families have to do, that'll just be, be free for, for them now, so. Any questions?
So recently, I do, the app that you talked about, is that just for bus or is that a general school?
That'll just be, that'll be specific to buses through that program.
Recently, the administrative team presented on chronic absenteeism and the journey that Springfield has been through in order to reduce our chronic absenteeism in our school buildings. Somehow, some way, the, the, the ODE, ODE has gotten a hold of our presentation, is extremely excited about the results that we got, and is reaching out to Springfield in order to find a way to showcase all the work that has been done in the district. So that's really exciting. Usually when ODE contacts you, it's not good news, this one was.
Last month, at the board meeting, I talked a little bit about remembering to sign up for kindergarten and preschool. Well, somebody got the message about preschool for sure, because I'm excited that it looks like this school year, probably in the first time in about five to six years, that we will have three teachers teaching preschool, both AM and PM, and we anticipate all six sessions will be full. So that is great news for our students that have early intervention and that need that support and maybe haven't been getting that support. You know, the past few years, a few people have called and said, oh, I think my kid might need some extra help, and they're about to turn five. So we're glad that they called and reached out, and then we will also have the typical peers to match them. So those students will be getting early, access to early literacy and early math by our great preschool teachers. So we have twenty-eight screenings scheduled for next week.
Wow, nice. Real quickly, last month, I think it was, we announced that Andrea Novicki was one of the top eleven teachers. It has been announced that she is now one of the top four. So there's four teachers left, and we should be hearing soon if she's going to make it to the Ohio Teacher of the Year. But being, being four in the top four, it's, it's amazing. We have been getting a lot of emails and phone calls from people all over the state congratulating Springfield for having Andrea as a top four, so that, that's exciting. Piggybacking a little bit on Mary, yes, I'm very proud of our administration for the chronic absenteeism and all the hard work that everybody here has done to get our numbers down to where we were at. I know we've had districts from everybody, there was mostly Summit County, some Portage County, some Stark County, they have been contacting us quite a bit to ask us about how did we make the changes that we've done, and wanting to present, helping, want us to help present to their staff on chronic absenteeism. So we're definitely leading the way here in Springfield on that. And then finally, last, the last week before school, just like you guys, we have been running ragged and moving hard and looking forward to another school year, so we're excited. That's it.
Thank you. Item number twenty-four is items worthy of your note. I'll quickly read down the list. On August twenty-first is the staff's first day with a convocation at eight AM. Also on the twenty-first, Spring Hill Elementary, first through third will have an open house, four-thirty to five-thirty. August twenty-fourth, excuse me, twenty-first, Shrop Intermediate, four through six, open house between five-thirty and six-thirty PM. On August twenty-third, grades one through six, seven and nine will be the students' first day. August twenty-four, grades eight, ten, eleven and twelve, students' first day. August twenty-fifth, Spring Hill Kindergarten, open house at one-thirty PM. August twenty-eighth, kindergarten last names beginning A through G, their first day. Also on the twenty-eighth, preschool open house, ten through eleven AM. On August twenty-nine, preschool, or excuse me, kindergarten last names beginning H through Q, that's their first day. On August twenty-nine, preschool's first day. August thirty, kindergarten last names beginning R through Z will have their first day. And August thirty-first, first day for all kindergartens, regardless of their last name, to attend together is what. On September fourth, Labor Day, there will be no school. September nineteenth will be the next regular meeting of the Springfield Board of Education at eight, six PM here at the Administration's Senate.
And on the South Side Leader, there was a full page, so if you aren't sure about the, for any of this community out there, if you're not sure about the dates, there was a full page of all this information for them to know.
Very clear. All right, now, item number twenty-five, we'll have citizens' comments, and we ask the citizens, try to limit to five minutes in duration. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Case seeing none, then it's recommended that the board go into executive session at this time to prepare for, for preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees.
There'll be no action taken?
There won't be any. When we return, there will be no action taken.
Ms. Terry?